Thanks, sir. All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any comments from the public tonight? All right, no comments. So we will move on to presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. The calendar 2020, 21.
Version.
Eleventh draft.
All right, so we have before you the final draft of the 2020, 2021 school calendar. We have asked all of our principals to share this final draft with their faculty and staff to provide feedback. And there are a few things to note. For example, in November, we have two full PD days on November 2nd and 3rd, and this will allow for two solid days for professional development. We may be able to bring speakers in, work hard on curriculum initiatives, on our district improvement plan and school improvement plan goals, or other things as well. On Tuesday, November 3rd, that is Election Day, it is also the PD day that we have reserved with, for professional development offerings with the Cape Cod Collaborative. In the past, that has been in October, but this coming year, it will be in November, on November 3rd. This is a great opportunity for our K-12 specialists and counselors who get an opportunity to receive professional development in their content-specific areas. Other things to note, although we did bring up a little bit of concern with a two-day week, we added December 23rd to allow for travel, based on feedback that we've received from administration and staff. And we do realize that our end date in June is June 25th. So that it's a little bit late based on the fact that we have a very late Labor Day. So we know that if we get a snowy winter and some school cancellations, we may find ourselves in a bit of a bind, so fingers crossed for a mild winter. And that's, that's the calendar.
Great, thank you, Beth. Any comments or discussion?
Just a quick question, if I may.
Sure.
That second professional day in November came from October.
Yes, it did.
It's not a new day. We've just moved it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Just only, I appreciate the opportunity that everyone's had to weigh in and, you know, give their thoughts and feedback. So, thank you.
Sure.
Great. Zona, Tim?
Oh, good.
Any questions?
Well, and all the effort it took to get through 11 drafts.
Yeah.
Yes.
The kids will be happy after Halloween.
The teaching staff as well.
Yeah.
No school on Monday. All right. Well, thank you. Moving on to K through 5 science curriculum review. Michael Horton?
Good evening. My name is Michael Horton, the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for STEM. I have the distinct honor to introduce Dr. Amanda Bardsley. The district has hired Dr. Bardsley to lead this project. I've been talking about science for a couple of years now. Dr. Bardsley has extensive experience, the Boston Public School System, getting teachers together, looking at different resources, and kind of moving forward with a vertical plan kindergarten through 5th grade. So without further ado, I want to welcome Dr. Bardsley.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Mandy.
Thanks. Good evening. Hold us up. I am so excited to be here this evening to share with you the plan that we have to go through and, and pre-screen and pilot and determine what type of curricula that we want to implement next year in K through 5. I have a quote down at the bottom. It's something that I believe strongly in. And it says, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." And I think that that's a really important idea that we're trying to implement, and we're trying to go fast and far. And I'll walk you through the plan that we have and who is on our team. So I'm the coordinator. We have a teacher from each of the six grade levels. For kindergarten, we have Taylor Murphy. First grade is Annie Dixon. For second grade, we have Taylor O'Brien, who's a 5th grade teacher, and she will be representing 2nd grade, because we didn't have a 2nd grade teacher apply. We do have a 2nd grade teacher who is willing to pilot curricula. So we will still get the feedback for what it looks like in the classroom. 3rd grade is Rosemary Topham. 4th grade, Eliza Coso, and 5th grade is Jen Lewis. So we have a very strong team. We are getting in there and we're starting to learn together and explore some of the shifts that are going on in science education reform. And that's really important to get a common baseline before we move forward with critiquing and figuring out what is a really good fit for Nantucket. So the plan for our work is, I divided it into these five steps. Prepare, pre-screen, explore, evaluate, and present. And I'm going to go through and talk about each one of those steps very briefly. So the first step is prepare, and the goal is to determine our readiness, Nantucket's readiness to implement a K-5 science curriculum next year. We used a Next Gen Time rubric. This is something that was developed nationally in order to kind of figure out whether districts are ready and teachers are ready for this type of work. So it looks at district support, teacher readiness, and we can use that to evaluate our progress over time. So we'll come back to this rubric and see what type of steps we've made next year, two years from now, three years from now. And I think that will help us, steer us in the right direction and keep us moving forward. We also wanted to identify the list of curricula that we want to consider. The ones we have identified are Activate Learning Prime, Amplify Science Foss, Smithsonian, and STEM Scopes. So this is the very initial list. We have to quickly narrow this down to three curricula in order to pilot this spring. So I am going to be using one of these tools. I need to narrow it down. There are some things I like about one and some things I like about another. I might try to marry them together. And really look at evidence around the use of phenomena. So that's one of the really big shifts in science education, is being phenomena-based. So it's really important that phenomena that was relevant to the students that are in front of us. And I think that's something that's going to be very important for us to look at. For instance, some curriculum might have something about a train that, you know, elevates and moves based on, I don't know, like levitation-type of properties. And that may not make sense for our kids here. So what makes sense for them as we're moving forward? We need a logical sequence, which is pretty obvious. We really want the students to be doing the figuring out. We don't want the teachers to be telling the students. It's about the students learning how to explain these things for themselves. Three-dimensional, so we want the disciplinary core ideas, which are the standard, the old standards-type of thing, the content, mixed with the science and engineering practices and cross-cutting concepts. The science and engineering practices are how scientists do science. How do they speak, listen, write, read, act, do, perform, whatever verb you want to use there? It's how scientists do it. So those three things, the cross-cutting concepts are the bigger ideas that tie across all the different domains in science. So like scale, things like that. So we want to evaluate the curricula to make sure that they're three-dimensional, and then back to the relevance and authenticity. The different ideas that we are exploring as a group are, to create this common baseline, are around the shifts, performance expectations, which is a little bit different. In the past, we talked about standards, and now it's more about, you know, what are students doing? So that three-dimensional aspect, what are students doing in the classroom? The science and engineering practices, so we'll explore. There are eight of those. We are dividing those up into three different categories, investigating, sense-making, and critiquing. And that helps narrow it down, so, because eight's kind of broad and can be hard to grasp on to, what are you doing when? But if you can narrow the framework a little bit, it makes it easier to implement in the classroom. And then, again, back to phenomenon coherence. And then lastly, we need to learn how to use the Equip rubric, which brings all of these things together. The Equip rubric was created to work with teams of teachers to have conversations around these topics as they're evaluating curricula. So the product is not having the rubric finished. The product is having the conversations and moving that knowledge and understanding forward. We will pilot three curricula this spring. Our goal, and this is a really, really tight deadline, so we're hoping to make this happen. We might need to come back and reevaluate this. We're looking at a first pilot happening in March to mid-April, and a second pilot happening in mid-April to May. Each curricula would be piloted by four teachers. So you can see with the table that I created, for instance, Pilot A might be kindergarten, 2nd, 3rd, and 5th grades. All right, so we have a matrix going. Not every teacher will pilot every curricula. But that gives us four pieces of evidence to reflect on. So in the evaluation part, it's a combination of using the Equip rubric and the evidence that we collect from the pilot. And teachers are going to pull that information together and create a presentation, which is our last step. And in addition to those two things, we're going to try to tie it to some of the important district initiatives that we have around culturally and linguistically sustaining practices, universal design for learning, and socio-emotional learning. So the teachers will prepare these presentations in June, and that will give us feedback on which directions we might want to go. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Questions or comments, Zona? No? Pauline?
Um, no, I don't. I'm, I, I don't have questions. Thank you. I'm glad that you're putting focus and attention onto the science curriculum, and I look forward to seeing the outcome of your findings at the end of the year. But, thank you. Thanks, Mandy.
Tim?
I don't really have any questions. I'd be interested to see how this gets fleshed out.
It's, it's definitely going to, we're going to have to adapt as we go, which you do in the classroom anyway, right? And we, we start to learn where our gaps are in our knowledge, and we have to take a little, you know, detour and fill those in if we need to. And then, you know, getting the materials here and getting them ready to, to pilot is, is going to be a hurdle to get through as well.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, you said implementation you hoped would be next year. Did you mean the coming September?
Yes, September.
So SY21 is the same as FY21?
Yes, so it's academic year 2021.
Was that it, Steve?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Oh, did you want, yeah, sure.
I just wanted to thank Mandy and Mike Horton for the work that they've put in to bring this group together. It's been a pleasure working with them to kind of get this initiative off the ground. It's something that I know the district has been looking at to move our science practice forward at the elementary level. It is a challenge. There is so much to teach in the elementary schools, and it's hard when you are looking still at new standards, next-generation science standards are still fairly new. So I appreciate the team and their willingness to really dig down into the work with Mandy, with Mike, and, and then with their colleagues, because some of their colleagues will be helping with the pilot. And all of this information hopefully will bring us to some strong decision-making based on the data for what we would like to implement next year for science curriculum. So I thank you both for the work you're doing.
Thank you. And the team is also very excited about this work. It's great.
Let's give rise to another question, if I may.
Sure.
And I apologize for not already knowing that there are standards for K through 5 as there are for the other grade levels. How does this interact with that?
So the goal, I mean, that's a very good question. So we are looking at curriculum that address NGSS, a further step of this. Because Massachusetts did not fully adopt NGSS, they adapted the standards. We will have to look at where the gaps are between Massachusetts and NGSS, and that is something that's just going to hap, to happen in the future.
But at a minimum, we would be making sure to follow the mass standards, possibly with some additions. Is that what you're saying?
Sometimes the standards are the same.
Right.
Sometimes the wording is different, and it doesn't really change anything. Sometimes the wording is significantly different, and it adds something to the standard. And sometimes Massachusetts has additional standards that NGSS doesn't have.
Yeah, you mentioned the word gaps. That's why I asked.
There's, they would be smaller. This would be taking on a huge step forward in terms of, of science, a sustained program of science in, in K to 5. And we will still have to do a little bit of work after this.
Thank you.
May I clarify something?
Yes.
Just, just to clarify, the national, the next-generation science standards are national, and since Massachusetts didn't adopt, that's where the gaps are coming in. However, the curricula that we're looking at are national curricula.
Yes.
So that's why we need to see where those curricula fit with our Massachusetts standards and fill in the gaps that way. So that's a lot of what that work is, is happening, or a lot of that, that they're charged with, so.
They say Massachusetts is an NGSS-like state.
Always doing our own thing.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming to present and for all your, your work and your commitment to the program. Thank you. All right, moving on to committee discussions and votes to be taken. We have a vote to approve the district improvement plan?
Before we, oh, all right.
Sure.
Go ahead. I'll wait for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, sorry.
Well, some of the, um, some of the, let me get the title right. Some of the completion dates, say January 2020. I just, I mean, shouldn't those be updated if it's not completed?
So, if I may.
Yes.
This is a living document, so we will, the last iteration that you have in your hands is December 16th. We just recently had an administrative team meeting, and we looked at some of these to, some of the initiatives and objectives to prioritize. So I can certainly update and will be updating regularly those completion dates as we go through and get a better hold on our timelines for the rest of this year. So, good point, and certainly we will be, as I said, making updates as, as regularly as we can based on the fact that this is a living document.
So, me personally, I would feel more comfortable if those dates were gone through at least once, and, you know, you can put, like, some of them have summer/fall, you know, 19, 20, or whatever, things like that. I just, I would feel uncomfortable updating the plan with past dates and complete not being next to it. That's all. That's what I'm saying. I know it's a living document, but those dates should be living and not dead. Does that make sense?
So you are looking for a completion?
Well, push it out, you know.
Or push it out.
Obviously, it can't be January.
Yes, well, that's the idea. We will be changing the dates to push them out to make them more appropriate. If there are any there that we feel are not completed, or not started, or are completed, we would make that adjustment. And I would be happy to make an adjustment and have it reposted to our website with a February 1st date, or, or February, what's today, the 3rd and 4th? Okay, so, February 5th, I could certainly make those adjustments. We, we have a, a, a strong understanding of where we are and where we need to go. So that can certainly happen, and we can make sure that that happens regularly.
May I ask if what we're talking about, Zona, is awaiting improvements to the improvement plan before we approve it?
If, if everyone else is comfortable with knowing that it's a living document and that the dates will...
They're fluid.
They're fluid.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
Then I'm comfortable with that. I just, you know, when you see, I, I guess, I'm kind of a black-and-white person. Well, actually, I'm black, but I'm black-and-white when it comes to certain things. And when I see, like, September 1st, 2019 was the completion date, or whatever, and it still says it's in progress, or in process-type thing, I'm a little bit put off by that. That's just me. It's a, it's a Zona thing. Okay?
But you couldn't put down?
For the record.
To be determined on every one of them. I mean, because...
I, I, I get that, but push it out, at least so that we know, you know, what, by no means, it's not complete.
Right.
You know, they, they just need to jive more.
But there are probably items here that have been completed.
Yes.
Right, so, so, right, so that would be correct to have a January 2020 if it's complete. But no, I hear what you're saying.
And then we would know that the online version is the up-to-date version.
Right. Yep, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, the online version.
Yeah. See, here's an example. Check page 15. You know, it's 4.2. It says completion date, December 2019, and then it says status is planned. It does not say complete. But the one above that, 4.1, completion date was August 2019. It does say complete. So do you see what I mean? How it's out of sync?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm tidying up.
No problem. All right, so are we ready to vote for this tonight? May I have a motion?
We, we have the motion. It's been second. We just have to say aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not opposed.
Aye.
All right.
Then aye.
All right. We have a vote to approve the school improvement plans for NHS, CPS, NIS, and ES? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
Well, two, actually. We're going to do all four together?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have a question about the status of intervention in math at CPS. It says that intervention will take place second semester. I think we're in the second semester. Do we have intervention?
Just in to second semester, actually, yesterday. And Mr. Horton and I are using our SST multi-tiered systems of supports to inform interventions needed with certain students. So the admin will look at those recommendations for particular students. Like I know, for example, from the Students 14, we have two students who are doing an intervention once a week for math specifically. So it's, we're started the process, but we need to make sure it is adequate and does what we need it to do with intervention exactly.
Yeah. And may I ask who the interventionist is?
So students are leading, so of course, we have X Block with math teachers. But in this case, some students were found that they needed that extra support for math. So they're working with the school counselor to provide those extra supports.
During, well, I suppose they're all during the school day, but X Block is after school.
Yes.
Is that where these interventions? Sorry?
No.
So they're during the school day?
Yeah.
The traditional school day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And again, we're looking forward to kind of propel more students into that.
Any other questions? Yeah, okay. So we have a vote to approve the school improvement, improvement plans, NHS, CPS, NIS, and ES?
It was moved in second.
It was moved in second.
Yeah, sorry.
May I have a vote to approve the calendar 2021?
No, we have to vote on the four plans.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Actually, I thought I interrupted before we had a motion in a second.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the four plans.
Thank you.
Nice second.
All, okay, all.
All in favor?
All in favor. All, any opposed? No? Thank you. A vote to approve calendar 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from Nantucket Wine and Food Festival Charitable Foundation to NHS Culinary Program in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve donation from Nancy Seraphini to Nantucket Community School Ready, Set, Read Program in the amount of $1,014?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve January 22nd, 2020 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote to approve transfers and invoices?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I would like to interrupt again and just comment on the donations that we receive. It just struck me, as I read those today, that nearly every meeting, we're getting five digits worth of donations. And I think that's just indicative of how supportive our community is. It's great.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's almost always into five figures.
It's amazing.
We're very fortunate.
Just to comment.
All right, the superintendent report.
Okay. So first on the agenda here is the principal search for the next Nantucket High School principal. We have posted the position along with a detailed job description. If the site permits, some of the, some of the websites where we post don't have an option to put a detailed job description, just a short narrative. But we have done this at seven different organizations, and I'll see if I can get all the letters and the acronyms correct. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, the New England School Development Council, the American Association of School Administrators, Ed Weekly in print and online, Top Jobs and School Spring, both of which are educational sites, not just large job clearinghouses. And of course, our own website, which is linked to all available online postings, both internally and externally. We're in the preliminary stages of assembling a principal search committee that will be comprised of a wide variety of individuals, including teachers from NHS, TA, a principal, district administrator, students, parents, and community members. I hope to have people's commitments by February 14th so that we can meet to review candidate applications and begin our first round of interviews in the beginning of March. So we have so far about eight, nine candidates through one of the sites. It's only been posted since last Monday, so we have not, it's still early. It's quite early. But some interesting candidates, and it'll be interesting to see where we go and who, who we see coming to want to join our great team.
Thank you.
Next, we, just a little...
Can we ask a couple of questions about that?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Sure.
Posted to staff?
Yes.
Okay, and the, I guess it's three questions. The closing date for applications is the 14th?
No, closing date, the closing date for applications is, I think it's the 29th of February. Thank you.
Of February, but you're meaning to review what you've received so far on the 14th, did you say?
No, I'm just saying that we will have commitment of, for the committee.
Oh, the, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I misunderstood. So the closing date is the end of February. I guess it's a leap year, and they have to have all their documentation in by then? So I would assume most of it is electronic?
Most of it, yes. I mean, obviously, there is still the opportunity to send paper copies to us. We will accept.
Yeah. No, fine. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay. CPS schedule?
Sure, yes. A little update on our CPS scheduling for next year. We have a representative from the New England League of Middle Schools coming. His name is Chris Pollitt. He'll be coming to meet with the CPS scheduling team for a full-day workshop this Saturday, February 8th. He is quite well-known in the state for his work with middle school scheduling. He does middle school workshops through NELMS, N-E-L-M-S, the New England League of Middle Schools, but also requested for opportunities to come to a middle school and give a more concentrated scheduling workshop. So he's currently a middle school principal in Tingsborough, Massachusetts, and comes very highly recommended.
So, um, he's currently a middle school principal in Tingsborough, Massachusetts, and comes very highly recommended. So, the scheduling team is really looking forward to, um, working with him. Um, I know that, um, I've been certainly talking a lot with him. He's asked a lot of questions about our schedule. And, um, our scheduling team that has been working very diligently, uh, since January, have, um, a lot of, um, things already in their minds that they're going to bring to him. And, um, it will be, I think, a really worthwhile and, um, valuable day for everyone so that, um, we, uh, see some, uh, some, some true work in that area and perhaps, um, get a good head start on the schedule.
Perfect. Thank you. That's great to hear.
So, when is he coming?
He's coming this coming Saturday, February eighth. So, we really look forward to having him.
If I may, of course. Uh, is the team still open, or is it now a set group of people?
Um, it's a, it's been a set group of people, more from self-selection. I mean, they, um, we requested, uh, representation, obviously, from all the grade levels, from EL, from Encore, from special education administrators. And this is the team that's been working together, um, not only, um, from January on, but also several of them, um, were part of the task force that we put together in the fall to look at the current schedule. Uh, and many of them have years of scheduling experience, uh, under their belts because they've been involved at CPS or outside in, in other districts as well. So, we have a talented team. They've been working very hard, and, um, um, it's, it's been, it's been moving along. And we're glad to have Chris there to, uh, kind of guide our work, and, uh, we'll see how things go.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Enrollment.
Okay. So, you have enrollment, uh, in front of you. And you can see that, um, our last report, which was at the end of January, we have a, um, we're down a few, um, from, uh, one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine to one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. There are really a wide variety of reasons as to why, um, our enrollment might drop. Some families determine that, uh, private school is better for their children, uh, or, um, they choose that route. Economy and housing, a lot of these decisions are, are personal, uh, for families. Um, we do have, and we do include our outside placements and referrals in our, um, in our enrollment report. So, um, that's something to consider. Um, also dropout. But, um, it's, it's, uh, not, uh, something that you can attribute to one factor that is causing us to lose, um, a few, a few students each month.
Well, the numbers are high. Um, so, I'm going to ask this question because it was brought up last month. That, I think, uh, Principal Kubish, did I say that right? Brought it up. Sometimes when they're gone for an extended period of time, it's a withdrawal and they have to re-enter. Is there overlap in those numbers? And I'd like to hear from each school if possible. Is that, is there that kind of overlap? Say, for examples, the four withdrawals at NES were because they weren't an extended thing and they came back, and so they're part of the seven entries. Do you know what I mean?
There is not in this number. In our, so for our January data, there is not.
Okay. NIS. Was it that overlap, possibly?
Um, we definitely had one student who returned after we, uh, delayed the withdrawal.
Okay.
Uh, overlap.
Okay. Just a pocket.
Okay.
Just curious, because the numbers are so high for withdrawal and entry. Alright, thank you.
Just like to say, I hope there's some special focus on the seventh grade. That's going to be a huger class next year. If the sixth grade is already one, fifty-seventh grade is where we see a lot of the private school kids come in. Um, so, that is going to be the biggest class we've seen ever, I think. So, I hope the scheduling committee is keeping that in mind. Sorry?
I thought most of the kids would be coming in from private school at sixth grade.
I think it's usually seventh grade is a higher number. But, either way, they're going to be very big, and I think Mike knows the answer to that.
Yeah.
That school, um, I thought it went to eighth grade, um, it went on, nobody there.
Yes, but I think the transition between, um, traditionally elementary, the fifth grade, sixth grade tends to be a natural, and also developmental. Um, that's normally a natural time of growth for a student, so...
Yeah, no, I was just thinking of how far the private schools go now.
So, the, the Nantucket New School goes to eighth grade, Nantucket Lighthouse School goes to fifth.
Okay.
That's new this year. So, they, but they both went to eighth, um, before.
So, we would probably see more kids coming into sixth grade?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, it used to be seventh grade for whatever reason. So, still, that'll make for another very large class.
And of course, ninth grade is the other one that we typically see, um, growth in.
May I just, um, sure, uh, attach to your, your comment about seventh grade? That is something that is definitely on our minds as we schedule.
Good.
We are thinking carefully about the numbers because we realize that, um, we're going to have two big classes, um, a seventh grade and a sixth grade as well. So, um, we need to keep that in mind as we move forward the scheduling.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to subcommittee work groups.
Just, uh, reporting on the Cape Collaborative Group. So, we had this state legislative breakfast last Friday, and I wanted to say that, uh, Nantucket was in the legislators' mouth quite a lot, complimenting us on how we are very diverse in our community, how we try to accommodate, uh, the different ethnicities throughout the, um, you know, town of Nantucket. They commented on the fact that we have an entire Catholic service, uh, for the ELL group and many other things. So, I just wanted to pass that along, that they were, they thought very highly of us. Now, that doesn't, um, make our number that we're getting on Nantucket any, any, um, larger, I should say. For the thing that came down the pike, the financial support. So, FYI, passing that along.
Thank you. Any updates?
No, so we know.
Negotiations. I can actually report, we've agreed on two issues.
Okay.
We're not just being friends anymore. We're actually getting things done. So, that's progress.
That's good. You can still get things done and be friends.
Ah, oh, so far.
Good, 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 good. And safety and security meets next week, I think.
Are we due for a policy?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we'll be in touch.
Yeah, could I ask, policy-wise? MASK put out new policies, but they didn't list them separately? Did I understand that correctly? I tried to go to their website based on the email we got, and it just seemed like they had all the policies there rather than the changes? Have I got that right or not?
That's typically what they do, is have them all there, but...
So, we have to dig through and figure out what's changed?
No, but they give us numbers. The ones that are changed, they give you the lettering for it. So, that's how we review it.
I will look at it more closely.
Okay, I have the email as well that I can send you with the specific policies that were updated.
Yeah, I believe you did send it.
Oh, see, we didn't get that. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, please.
Sure. I actually sent it to you and to, yeah, the policy members. Okay, um, agenda for next meeting?
I think we decided, um, did we decide we are not going to meet on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
I think we did, yes.
Okay. And then we have our self-evaluation. That we, do we want to have a workshop to review the self-evaluation in March?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I think we could, um, consider either March seventeenth, um, or, you know, once I have a chance to speak with Mr. Cozart, we could look at workshop dates. But it would be after the third.
Right, after the third. And then, do we want to, we also need to work on the superintendent's evaluation and get started with that. So, maybe we could have a workshop to at least come up with a subcommittee to work on the superintendent's evaluation? Okay, so we'll bring that up.
Why is the school committee self-evaluation on March third? Are we supposed to get our responses to Logan before that for a summary, or what are we doing? Sorry?
It's there as a placeholder, so you can determine a workshop. And I sent it out today to you with the...
And so, we would just have to have our responses in before the workshop? Do you summarize those?
I had asked today in the email if I could have everybody's response later at the first week of March.
I remember you saying we have a few weeks to think about it.
You can all determine when we'd like to do a workshop or how we'd like to do it.
Okay.
So, if we could have a deadline, let's say the third, Steve. March third.
Okay, that works for me.
Okay.
I mean, I did double-check that we have all the categories that are recommended by whoever the recommenders are.
MASK.
Yeah, last time we advised, it was two thousand seventeen, so it should be fine.
Yep.
Alright. Any other questions, comments, discussion? No? Wow. Steve?
I thought you were the one that had asked for...
Oh, no, I just want to make sure you have no more questions, comments, or discussion.
No, I'm good.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
You may.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.